Okay, welcome to this work session for Stillwater Area Public Schools District 834 for Tuesday, December 21st. We are going to be discussing two items at this work session. We're going to be discussing options for the Oak Park Building and also open forum, we'll have an open forum discussion. So I think the first item on the agenda is the options for Oak Park, so I will turn it over to Superintendent Landsfeld.
Okay, thank you Chair Petrie and Board Directors. Just to keep us on time tonight, before I begin, we plan on taking about a half an hour on this presentation and then the last hour we can spend on the open forum. Okay, so tonight we are bringing our vision for the Oak Park Learning Center is what we are calling it right now, and would like to present some information on that. So our vision for our kids and for our community for this building, we would like to create this as a center for learning, collaboration, and community building within this space. We'd like to create a functionable, usable, meaningful home for our Bridge Transitions 18 through 21-year-old program. That program has currently been in this building for the past four years, but programmatically we need to make some changes to better serve our students. Also, we would like to propose design for our Alternative Learning Center. And the first word in our ALC is "alternative," so a different space for our students that are currently at Stillwater Area High School. And then we would also like to look at developing a welcoming, usable space for our community and our staff. Within that would be a professional learning center, possible daytime and evening community education classes that could be a little bit different than what we're now providing our community and facility rental, classroom spaces, gym space, and more. We do have a beautiful gym in this building, and gyms are a rare commodity that we could be using and passing on that space to our community. So our next slide, this is from our community design team. That was a committee with, started with just under 100 community members, staff members, parents, and I think for the most part they're usually between 40 to 60-plus participants. A couple of springs ago they came together and came up with some priorities for our building spaces throughout the district. This list that you're seeing up here, these are the top priorities, and they are listed from top to bottom in order of prioritization. The very top priority that we're still working on was the rebuilding of Lake Elmo Elementary. We will need to go out for a bond for that, and more information on that will be coming in future meetings. The second priority was expanding the eight classrooms at Brookview Elementary. That is currently in progress. They've already broken ground and should be completed by fall of next school year. Third priority is what we're presenting tonight, is the use of the Oak Park Building. The CDT Committee proposed that it would house the ALC, the Bridge Transitions 18 through 21 program, and central services staff. We are studying options for this space. At this time, we are not recommending that all of central services move here. We do need space. We are spreading out. We do have, well, I'll talk about it a little bit more in just a minute, but with our tech levy now, we need a warehouse space which is already on central services property, and it is controlled with temperature, heat, air conditioning, and it has a very large dock space for when we do receive a lot of our devices for storage. But we'll talk more about that in just a minute. The fourth priority would be remodeling Stonebridge Elementary. We have been using some LTFM financing to address some of the needs in that building. It's made a big difference as well, some of our capital funds. And then we had as a priority selling Withrow Elementary. That was sold last month. And then the other priority, selling CSB, and at this time again, we are not making that recommendation, and we'll discuss more. Okay, so the third priority is the Oak Park Building, and it was again to utilize Oak Park as a multipurpose center. Top two priorities for that space would be for the Bridge Transitions Program, 18 through 21-year-old students, and then to create a viable space for our Alternative Learning Center students. Okay? Just a little bit, if you can go back a slide, I will talk just briefly about CSB. We looked into, we've sold some land, we've sold Withrow, and for the return on the money and what we're getting use out of, we won't be able to sell it for a lot, maybe a little over a million or so. And to come in here and move in close to 78 people with the remodeling, it would be millions, maybe between six to eight million plus to do that. And we feel like CSB is a viable space, and we would like to look at some space here for some of our programs that are housed at Central, but we do need the extra space. Also, we would rather prioritize our funding spent on kids rather than adults and take care of our kids first. They are our top, top priority. And again, to replace that warehouse and the dock storage that's currently on the central services property would become at a significant cost. With that, we're going to transition into the Bridge Transitions, and we will have Caitlin Willis. She's our Assistant Director of Student Support Services. Present.
Hi, thank you so much for the opportunity, I'm going to take my mask off I think, for the opportunity to talk about one of my favorite topics among many, but Bridge Transition Program. So our Bridge Transition Program is a program for students with disabilities who are ages 18 to 21, so they've finished their time in ninth through 12th grade at Stillwater Area High School. And they attend our program because their IEP teams have determined that they have continuing need in one of the transition areas. So I will talk about those three areas in a second in more detail, because that's what drives our instruction and drives the needs that we have here in the building. So we currently serve 39 students. That is slightly higher than we've been in previous years. We usually start the school year with around 30 to 34 students. Many of our students don't necessarily come and stay for the full three-year experience. It just depends on what their needs are. Every student is very much working on their own individualized plan as it relates to their continuing needs in the areas of transition. So it is a required program under IDEA. We are required for any student that's determined to be eligible to have this program. We're required as a school district to provide that. So with that said, just briefly, a little bit of the history. Originally, I've been here four years, so pre-may, the Transition Program was located at Stillwater Area High School. And that presented some difficulties in that our students are told, you're graduating, you're moving, you know, graduating, you're done with your ninth through 12 experience, you're going to move on to this kind of specialized program that's really going to get you ready for career, for employment, for post-secondary education, whatever you're, you know, is the appropriate next step for that student. And then they, they stay in that building. So that was not an ideal location, because it just, it really did not align with the mission and vision that transition programming is. And then they moved across the street to some leased space, I believe that was shared with the ALC. And I believe the decision was made right around the time all of the shuffle and the move to the middle school model and the various school moves. We were relocated to this building with the intention to create usable functional space for our 18 to 21 program. So here we are, we have space, now we need function. And so I'll talk a little bit about what those needs are. So our students, like I mentioned, they're working on one or more of three things. They're working on post-secondary readiness, employment or employability and career readiness, and independent living skills. And so some students are maybe just working on one or two areas, some are focused on all of those areas. We have, while it's a small population of students, we have a massively diverse level of need. Everything from students who are going to be fully supported in, in the community and in their sheltered work experiences, all the way to students who you would meet on the street, have a conversation with, and never know that they were an individual with a disability. So, and everything in between. So you can see that we have a lot of diverse needs as far as instructionally providing the things that are necessary. So in order to do that, we, just like in your K-12 experiences that you, that we had as students and that many of your children have had, there are standards and benchmarks, just like in math and reading and writing and all of those areas. Our standards and benchmarks are in the areas, like I said, of employment, post-secondary readiness, and independent living skills. So there's some national standards that we're working towards to make sure that students are ready for those next steps. So we're really prioritizing bridging. It's, it's not an accident that our Transition Program is called the Bridge Transition Program, because that's what we do. We are bridging students into the community. Our students are going to live and work and serve and be citizens in this community for probably their entire lives. And so it's really important to make sure that they feel connected to this community, that they know how to access help and accommodations when they need to in this community, and that they know how to be as independent as possible as young adults and aging adults in this community. So those are kind of just a brief overview of, of what we do and what our Transition Program is. And that brings me to what we need, what our students need in order to make that level of progress and to make those community connections and to build those skills in those three areas. We need a safe and accessible building. We need a building where I, our students know where to enter and exit every day. They, they know what is expected of them. Right now, we have multiple entrance points of this building, which can be very convenient on a snowy day, when my car is parked in a certain place. But it does present some safety concerns. So just thinking about the functionality of where our students are entering and exiting the building, so that we can be really efficient with supporting our students and helping them be independent. We need simulated work environments. So if students are learning what careers, career clusters that they might thrive and excel in, we need the opportunity to have little kind of miniature labs that reflect those kinds of spaces that they're going to eventually get jobs in, so that they can generalize those skills when they go out into the community and become employed. We need, just like with career readiness, we need simulated adult living environments. You know, one of the, the most empowering things to see a young student do is to learn how to live as independently as possible. So we have students right now in our program that when they started, they were living with their parents, they, we were working out kind of funky schedules to make sure that they had an adult at home when they got home. And those same students, two and three years later, are now living independently in their own apartments. And that's not an accident. We're doing a lot of discreet instruction on what does it mean to get up every day and brush your teeth, take a shower, how do you take care of your body, how do you know when to call a doctor, how do you know when to take Ibuprofen, how do you, you know, all of these kinds of things that I think that many of us take for granted because we've just learned it throughout our lives. We have to teach these things very discreetly, and then we have to fade back over those, the course of those one to three years that they're with us, to make sure that they know how to live as independently as possible. So with that said, I mentioned the diversity of student need. We have students that are attending career tech education classes at 916, and so they're coming and going. We have some students who are drivers, and they come for half a day, and then they leave and they go and, and work, or vice versa. They come, they work a job in the morning and they come and get some, some instruction in the afternoon. So we need some flexible learning spaces. I need an opportunity for a student who may be on the cusp of being college or community college-ready. I need a place for that student to drop down with their device and connect with, you know, another student in their class and get some homework done together. So when you think about the, kind of the college and post-secondary experiences that you had, kind of those similar experiences of the commons area where I can learn how to, to do some of this more independently. And then a large component of our programming is partnering with the community. So location is important, and this location is wonderful. We have easy access to downtown. We have great access to all those businesses on Five, near Target, and Walmart, and all of those places. So it's a very great centralized location, which is, which is wonderful, because we can work with students to develop their independence around transportation to and from our community-based partnerships. And in some instances, we, we had a student who came to us, I believe last year, who is not able, because of his disability, to get a driver's license. So we spent the year teaching him how to ride a bike. He had never ridden a bike before. And so now he rides a bike independently to his job where he works independently. So really, some, some phenomenal work being done here. Now it's, it's just, the exciting part is to think about how we can even improve all of the great things that we're already doing by providing these kinds of safe, accessible, functional, adult-living type spaces. And the only other thing I would like to highlight that, that has come up twice this year with different students is I had the opportunity recently to take a walk with one of our students who's getting ready to graduate. She's almost done with our program. And she was reflecting on her experience here in our program and was talking about, you know, when I was in 11th and 12th grade, they talked about, you know, how I was going to go to this program, and I was going to learn how to get a job, and I was going to learn how to take care of myself, and, and that it was at Oak Park. And, and I remember thinking, huh, I went to elementary school at Oak Park. So this is her telling me this story, and I'm like, yeah. And she goes, you know, it looks exactly the same. I'm pretty sure that where I'm getting my instruction is exactly where I got my instruction. And that, that, it, it's hard, because we're, we're sitting here talking to our young, young adult learners about how this is something new and different, and it's going to help them be the best adult and the most independent adult they can be. And then we introduce them to a space that reflects elementary school instruction and programming. And so my, my hope is that we can align those two things. We can align the great, the great work that we're doing with regard to instruction with the facilities that we have.
Can I just ask you and maybe Paul, why would we not lease a space? Just explain why we want it here.
Yeah, my, my understanding is that that takes money out of our general fund. So that's money that we could be spending on students. So when you think about, you know, return for investment, sometimes when we're running our household budget, we choose to spend a little bit more on the front end to save a little more on the, on the back end and to keep money in, in, in the classrooms for the students. So that would be my answer as the not-finance person here.
And I would assume if we're leasing a space, then we also have to go in and remodel in the beginning.
Right. Yeah, so you're right, you still have those remodel expenses, and there's nothing to say that the owner of that leased space doesn't want to eventually use it for something else. So you've, you've spent that, that money to, to make it the space you need instructionally, and you may or may not get to maintain and sustain that, that space.
Thank you. Okay. Paul, we'll let you take the next one.
Excellent. Well, good evening. Paul Lee, I'm the Director of Student Support Services. And it's really an honor for me to actually just introduce some information about the St. Cry Valley Area Learning Center. So the, just a little bit of background on an Alternative Learning Center. The Alternative Learning Center is really designed to provide services and educational opportunities for students that are at risk, and students that have found that the traditional school experience doesn't meet their individual needs. And our program here in Stillwater has a very proud and long tradition of doing just that. It's a program that's been very, very well-established for many, many years. Goes well, well beyond my time here, and Mary will have a chance to speak here about the program. She probably knows a little bit more farther the history, but at least going back 10 years, I've known, we, we've had the program and it's been, had great success. A little bit of the history. As far as, it's had a couple homes in the last 10 years. It was previously, it was located, as Caitlin mentioned, in a leased space. It was a Zinto property. It's kind of over to the, the west of the high school, and it's an industrial park. And that's where it was located until the fall of 2017. And it was at that time, the high school had been remodeled, or the big addition to the high school had been complete, and we were moving into the, the middle school model. And they had kind of isolated a space and a hallway, kind of near the back of the building for the ALC program. So it moved at that time. And as, as Caitlin said, it was a very fiscally responsible decision that was made about reducing and eliminating leased spaces, just because of the cost that, that incurs when you lease spaces like that. So it was moved over to the high school at that time, and, and that's where it, it, it is today. It does have its very kind of limited space there, and we'll talk a little bit more about the specifics of kind of the space that an ALC typically has. It is in statute, you know, in Minnesota, that all students need to have access to an area learning center. There are about, see, White Bear Lake has one, South Wash has one, and then 916 runs three different ones, kind of more up in the, would be northwest from here. And so there's a regional area so that students can attend those. And most of those programs serve about 120 students, and that's, that's a good size for an Alternative Learning Center. And it does then allow students within the region to, to reach those programs. Our program currently serves 82 students, and that's really about space, the availability of space that we have at the high school. I think there's certainly, we, if you go back like 10 years and kind of in that range, it, it did, the enrollment was around 120 for quite, quite a few years. When it moved over to the Zinto property, it dropped. And then there's a little transition where 916 took over kind of the running of the program, and it dropped even further. And now it's, it's kind of been building back up since that point, but I think it's, and Mary will speak to this, it's at a point where it can't expand anymore at the high school. So with all that said, I'm going to now turn it over to my esteemed colleague, Mary Liam Tishu, who is the administrative, provides administrative leadership for the ALC program.
Thank you, Paul. Welcome, everyone. I'll tell you, I've been in this district 22 years now, and the first year that I worked here, I was assigned on Fridays to check in with the ALC. ALC to see if I could be supportive as a principal. It was not a model that served well and it lasted a very short time. And then we moved to having a school psychologist take over the program. So it's been through a number of changes and then I became assistant principal over at the high school. But in the past six years, since we've organized around trying to create something better than just a site to increase graduation rate. Since we've tried to create something better than just graduation rate impact, we've created quite a reputation, oftentimes winning the Minnesota Alternative Programming Awards for our brilliant students because our students are bright lights and they come to us at risk because of something that's happened in their trauma or their harm or their experience as a child of a deceased parent or having been to treatment or having gone through the hardship of high school bullying where they truly didn't want to report it nor make remarks about it, but needed to flee. So those 82 students that I will speak of today represent about 25% BIPOC students, Black Indigenous People of Color, but only about 10 to 15% special ed this year. Some years were 25% special ed. So it just depends, but we are not a special ed site and we do not intend to replace the quality services of special education at the high school. And yet sometimes the student learner, for instance, I'll tell you a story of a student who came to us was in the ASD program, but the case manager who made the referral to the counselor said she needs her creative spirit honored. We have students with a strong sense of justice, a creativity that shows in a way that they can manifest their work through project-based learning and maker spaces. These are all buzzwords for what education should offer, but they're solid options for students who haven't found success taking a final or having a formal test instrument. So our ALC sat down with this student and said, what does the IEP team think is best for this child? And they actually chose an alternative education over the ASD program. Now that's not often the case, but this student has thrived and will not need to go to the transition program because of things we've been able to offer and the independence given back to the student because of a brilliant case manager and administrative team who said, let's see what can happen for this particular individual. To tell you who else we have, we have about 55 students who are in grade 12, 12 plus, 12 plus plus. What does that mean? We can't make our four-year graduation rate of 67%. So ESSA is our partner. So we send our students through in five years, some in six years. And sometimes during that curve, they're in and out of the building. So we need a space that accommodates that 20-year-old because they can attend until they're 21, if consecutively enrolled. So what we've found or we've discovered with working with our students is the population changes. Last year, my reflection where there were new students who experienced grief and loss and death and dying, their relatives, their siblings, their relations. This year, I'm experiencing a shift in numbers as well. We have, to use language that I've been taught throughout my experience working with students in the GLBTQ+ program, we have 12, excuse me, 25 cisgender male students, 26 cisgender female students, meaning born at birth identifying that gender. And we have, are you ready, 27 identification with non-binary or GLBTQ+. And what we know about those students is they're high achieving and they're making an impact, but they are not comfortable in the formal educational path. Whether it's the size, we're only five classrooms. Whether it's our hall, we only have one hall. Whether it's that it's adjacent to wellness, wellness is available to us, but not every single day. It's a choice. And ALCs throughout the state of Minnesota have students choose their setting because it's safe and comfortable for them to deal with who they are or who they identify as today. So I want to just tell you, our, our counselor will refer the student, but it's really the student and family who has to choose coming to an ALC. And we gamble with that 82 because we're actually full at 80, but we have a couple of students who are 12 plus plus, just taking online courses. In addition, we have the credit recovery program, but I'm not even speaking to that. That program houses about 120 kids online, 80 to 120. And in June, it's all digital and distance. Let me tell you a little bit about a student who told me today that she was excited to hear we'd go to Oak Park. She said, so I can park my car without paying? I've had to borrow money to make the payments monthly, but the school district let her. But she still felt that vulnerability or that, that, that feeling that I didn't have enough to do what other students in the formal high school setting were doing. And she needed to get that car to and from because she's actually living with her uncle out of her parents' home and wants to get her diploma this year. She came from an ALC that didn't meet her needs. She knew she needed alternative education, but what she needed was love, freedom, fun, belonging, the very William Glasser things of a quality school, and we offered that. If you're not familiar with who I am, I'm a restorative peacemaking circle person. And our school is a restorative peacemaking school. It doesn't mean however, that we vary from what the standards are. We still expect 43 credits and we ask our students to do what we call bundled credit so they can excel. Because if they come the senior year and they have 22 credits to earn, they will be there another two years estimated. So my brilliant teachers, and there are five licensed teachers in many areas, put together what we call standards-based learning opportunities in English and social studies, science and math. It's tricky. You can't, and John Perry can testify to this, you can't put it in a Power School grade book or a Skyward grade book. So we calculate grades and give feedback on credit earning to students. And the wonderful part about that is that there isn't just one way to succeed at the ALC. Yes, it's 43 credits, but it might be that you've, you've created a pack, a packet or a program opportunity doing dictators of the world and you've put it on building blocks, which if you look at Facebook tonight for the St. Cry Valley Area Learning Center, you'll see that student's project. Because the application level at Blooms is where students retain and hold the greatest amount of knowledge. Our kids have to work in that level or they will throw it aside. They don't test and they're not given homework. Our students choose work because they're happier at night not having six rigid classes, instead flexible opportunities. So I will tell you that we have about three highly mobile students right now. The state of Minnesota MDA site doesn't, doesn't identify any, but I know personally who they are. And I would say to you that those students also need added supports. So I do have some needs, if I might say that. And I think if I've got time.
We, we're out of time right now with the whole presentation.
So consider the financial and the emotional support for these children like you have for the past 22 years I've been here. And certainly if you have any questions, come on over and take a tour.
Thank you, Mary.
So when we talk about this, oftentimes if I, if I see, and we talk to students about the success that they've had at the ALC, one of the things I talk about is Mary. And you can see the passion and, and her alternative mindset that she brings to that kind of a program. We'd just like to kind of quickly finish up with, one of the things we've consistently heard of, heard from, and I, I did, I, we worked on a little bit of a study for a board about four, five years ago that we presented about the ALC and some different components. One of those things we did during that though is we did some focus groups with students that Mary led. And one of the things that really resound and came out of that was that the students were really talking about, they, a couple of them very eloquently talked about finding kind of their tribe. They found the people and the space that was kind of where they belong, where they didn't feel they belonged. And one of the other things that really resonated and what they talked about was they really felt it was important to have a space outside of the high school. It was, I think it was a well-thought-out idea and approach to have it in the high school because there, as you can see up here under considerations, there were some, there are some advantages of having an ALC in a high school. And they were, there are some, there's, well, for one, there's space there. Secondly, you have some opportunities for elective-type courses, art courses, some things like that, that a student from the ALC could leave kind of that hallway and participate in some of those opportunities at the high school. Also kind of lunchroom cafeteria, some access to mental health services, nursing services and that sort of thing that are part of that large building. But, but ultimately even with those, I think what we found and maybe Mary could speak to this, but very few students actually do take advantage of those things. Some of them do, but most of them, again, they talk about they, they're now part of this space and it's this space that is where they really thrive. And, and there is still a, a sense of when you talk that they would, they would really like to be in a space outside of the high school because some of them just experience anxiety driving into the parking lot, driving in, coming into that back door just because of the large space of the building. And sometimes it's just the size of the building causes some of those students anxiety and stress. So on here you'll see, these are some of the, the things that are important as far as location and space. Safe and accessible building, you know, with, with a separate entrance, so they have a way to come in and out of the building. The quiet, welcoming, non-threatening space. We talked about that, which many of the students have, you know, individual kind of mental health needs at, at this point in their life, as many of us have experienced at different times of life. The flexible learning space, and Mary talked about that, that's a very hands-on programming model, building things, that sort of thing, having those same common areas. And then really the room to expand the program up to 120 students or maybe even a little bit more. There is a kind of a return on investment component to the programming where when you get up to a certain point, the staffing, you're maximizing the staff, you're getting the, the revenue in for those, those students into the program. And the, the program becomes much more fiscally sound that way. So it would be better if we were up to the 120 and, and supporting the staff that we have working at the building.
Okay. Thank you. And with that, I'll turn over the next slide to Annette Solomon.
Good evening. Annette Solomon, the Community Education Director. So I'm not going to provide you with a lot of detail tonight, mostly because before we can determine how we might use spaces, we need to understand what those spaces are. So once those spaces would be defined, then community education would do exactly what we always do, which is maximize the use of those facilities for the benefit of the community. So that's what I'm going to give you tonight. I know it's not much, but hopefully it's the beginning of a, a great experience for our community.
So finally, just to summarize all, all of the things that you heard tonight, I'm, I'm kicking this off because I'm currently here. Our program is here. And so the idea of turning this into a community, community learning center, that's better, a community learning center is, is really important to our students here at this program, but also to, to Mary's program and the potential for adult programming as well. And that's, to some degree, that's about being financially responsible. It's, our students need access to health services, to nutrition services, to school social work services. And it's really a difficult thing to provide students when you have a very small program. So by partnering with the ALC, who also have young adult learners, also working very much in, in kind of an individual project-based way, similar to how we are in the transition program, we can, we can partner on resources, but we can also do some really phenomenal and intentional instructional partnerships. So for example, I have two students who are now working in our schools as paraprofessionals. They came through our transition program and they're now employed in our school in an area where we are struggling to find enough people. And so being able to connect programs together like that opens the world up for students. So yes, there are those fiscal, let's partner our resources, which is a responsible thing to do and increases access for our students, but then there's also the emotional and the instructional component of that, which is, I believe, the more we put people together that are in alternative-type programming, whether it's special education 18 to 21 program, alternative learning, or adults in the community coming to, to take classes here, there, there's only wonderful instructional growth things that can happen from that.
Thank you.
So lastly, in, in operations, my job here is to support student learning and the academic achievement of all of our kids. And so the next couple of slides here is looking at if this is something the board wants to do is looking at Oak Park as the Oak Park Learning Center, is creating kind of three different areas within our building and to meet, best meet the needs from facility-wise through those different spaces. So if you kind of look at the aerial view here, the kind of the satellite, the northern part of Oak Park is the current parking lot and the current transitions entrance is what they have right now. So they'd be kind of staying in that northern part of the building. The middle part or kind of the western part would be the public access are kind of where the community spaces would be. And then the southern end of the building would be where the ALC is. And then you'll see at the bottom there, there's currently some blacktop area there and we have to work with city and those sorts of things. This is just a draft, but possibly looking at adding a parking lot or some parking spaces there and create an ALC entrance there in the southeast kind of corner of the building. There's currently an entrance there, but kind of expanding that vestibule area. So this is just kind of the draft concept of this is what the board, that what we would like to do. These are kind of the ways that it would look. And then we would work with Caitlin and her team and then Mary and her team to really create the best learning environments we can for our kids to support their academic achievement. Looking at the next slide is kind of a little more in-depth. Again, we haven't got too far in each one of these areas here until we kind of get the direction here, but you can kind of see the light blue areas, the transitions at the bottom, that brownish area is the ALC. And then you kind of see some shared spaces with the gymnasium. We would open up the kitchen again. Currently, the, the transitions has their meals, I don't know, say catered here every day or brought over. They're, they're made at the store or middle school and brought over here. But if you bring the ALC over here, we'd open the, the kitchen and cafeteria up and have breakfast and lunch made and served here and get those facilities kind of back up and running. So the purple area would be the shared spaces, then you can kind of see where transitions and the ALC would live. Then the next step, so this is kind of phase one of kind of talking program.
Can we go back to that? So I just, real quick, I just want to mention that the white space would be the open areas and that's the upstairs with all of the classrooms. And we have been spilling over with teaching and learning and professional development space. This space not only could be used for community education and classes, but it could be used for professional development. And we have had over at the central services building, stacks and stacks of teaching and learning resources and curriculum where here, we could utilize some of this space for that and have carryover with, with staff and professional development. Thank you.
And then lastly, kind of looking at, at costs or potential kind of timeline for these projects, if there's something we want to move forward, we would look at doing the transitions, starting this summer. It'd probably go into construction, kind of go into the start of next school year, which we'd talk with Caitlin and her team about kind of relocating the transitions here within Oak Park for the first couple of months until that construction's done. And then the following summer, the summer of 2023, would be working on the ALC spaces as well as the shared spaces with the parking lot, the cafeteria, kitchen, those specific areas. And then an estimated cost of what that would be, phase one would be the 3.8 would be the transitions remodeled here this summer and in early next fall. And then the shared space and ALC of, of that $4 million would be next summer, the summer of 2023.
Capital?
So some of this would be capital, some of this would be LTFM. We could use the like-for-like, when you replace carpet, you could use LTFM, but if you're moving walls and those sorts of things, you would need to have capital expenses. So the next step would be digging into what specifically is LTFM eligible, what specifically is capital eligibility? We haven't dug that far yet, but those are things that we would dig into if that's something the board would like us to do.
And with that, we are open for questions. We went over our time, so we'll try and answer fast. Any questions, comments by any board members? Allison?
I, I love the idea. I think that there is just a great synergy in this. So from my point of view, because I know we're over on time, I'd love to see more detail in terms of the cost and the more specifics in the plan, like you're mentioning, Mark. Just out of curiosity, I just had a couple of questions. CSB, do we have like a recent, like appraisal on that property? Do we, just out of curiosity, have we had that appraised or if so, when or just curious? Okay.
Not that I'm aware of recently.
Yes, Pete?
Is the transitions not here right now already? We're just looking to approve the space that they already have?
Yes, we are here. So we are at the, the opposite end of the building down here and we are literally in the spaces as they were used. So we have two, I think they were preschool classrooms and maybe four.
classrooms, and maybe four elementary classrooms. So we are using the space, but it's it certainly does not meet our needs and is not functional for for the population that we're serving, of our students here. And if this moves forward, as as Mark mentioned, and and this happens on the timeline brought to you today, we would just basically flip-flop classrooms. Like, we could come down to this end, because right now, we really are just using the space. So there's not a lot of movement, other than bodies and teachers that have to happen. So we would just flip down while while the work is being done and then go back into the space when it's completed.
Transitions year-round?
Transition program follows the same calendar as Stewardor High School. There is extended school year programming, and pretty much all of our students are eligible for extended school year programming, and about 50% of them elect to attend extended school year programming. Usually, we try and offer that here. The only time that doesn't work is if there's some kind of maintenance project going on, like the summer with the bathrooms. Then we we have to find an alternative location. But we always try and keep that program, ESY program, as part of their facility.
Melinda, you know, I agree with Allison that we are probably going to need to get see some more information about this, particularly about cost. What sort of a timeline do you have in mind? If if you are thinking about doing some work this summer, what sort of a timeline do you have in mind?
I prefer to you, Mark, probably soon.
Yeah, right now, we're past the deadline in terms of getting the work done this summer to start the beginning of next school year, just in terms of getting it approved to kind of the the go-ahead. And then the kind of the next step is working with Caitlin, who's is the first one of the transitions, and then her team of looking at, okay, taking that area, and then looking at creating individualized spaces. She talked about the independent living area, the workspace area, some classrooms, some flex space, and kind of looking at that. So there's about a few months of the design after that. So short answer is, we ideally, we could get bids out and try to get some of the demo and and some of that abatement stuff done over the summer. So when school starts, all that stuff is done. And then we can start some of the remodel to move in probably around December, December winter break-ish. But in terms of timeline here, I'd say if we kind of get the the go-ahead in January of some time to start, you know, some of the design, we can do some of that now if that's what what the board would like us to do, but start some of that design work and bring that to you. But typically, we don't get too far down the road, you know, with architects in terms and until we know if the project is is going to be go or not. But we can start working on some preliminary drawings and taking that next step here in the next few weeks and bring that back to you in January.
Okay. So then, Melinda, what are you looking for from us tonight? Are you just sort of...
Just kind of an indication that we could start breaking down the costs and and looking at design to bring forward to the board.
I was just going to say, when you break out those costs, you know, obviously, some will be capital, some might be long-term facility maintenance, some of this might have to be included in a bond ask to the community. But could we also see the breakdown of any operational impact? It sounds like the ALC is fairly self-contained. You have a staff, you have a principal, you have some of these staff members that will just follow. But you know, you mentioned opening up a cafeteria. That kind of, you know, general fund impact would be helpful, too.
So just a couple, real real quick. Cafeteria is out of Fund II, which is the food service. So it would not be an impact to our general fund. The cafeteria and food service workers come out of the food service fund. So that would not be a general fund expense. That would be a food service expense. Also, in the long-term facility maintenance plan that was approved last summer for the projects, this summer, there is work within the transitions classrooms. Caitlin and her team moved in the fall of '17, was it, I believe? And there hasn't been any work to the rooms, except for last summer, we did two bathrooms, one in one of the classrooms and one in their nurse's office area. Other than that, countertops, flooring, ceiling, everything else is kind of back being in elementary classrooms. And so it's time for those transition spaces to have some work done. So if this is something we want to do, we could use some of those dollars that we would have put towards remodeling that to use some of the like-for-like purposes. And then if we want to create more of a transition-specific space, then we'd add some capital dollars in to, you know, move some walls or move some things around that wouldn't qualify under LTFM funding. So those are further breakdown we can do.
That would be great.
But that's kind of what we're looking at right now.
I I just think that the transitions, we've kicked it down the road long enough. These kids deserve better. Former kindergarten teacher, if you're leaning over preschool sinks and you're an adult, which these students are, the rooms are just not adequate for them, and I think they deserve better. And when you look at the CDT recommendations, and they did a preliminary breakout cost for what it would take, inflation is here and the cost continues to go up. We've seen that with Brookview. And and so time-wise, I would like to try to start to move forward with this work for these for our kids.
Tina?
Could I get, I know we're talking about operational costs as far as the cafeteria, but I would like to see a better breakdown of what you need for support services and that as well, and and what the cost will be operationally to have the the full program cost lined out.
We can do that.
Yep, thanks.
Vivian?
I guess, yeah, I'd like I'd like to see two things. One is, how much of the staff that's moving from the high school, like, how much extra staff is needed? Like, some of the staff is being used in the high school now, and some will then you'll have to have different staff here. But really, I my real question was, what are you going to do with the ALC spaces in the high school after ALC moves? Like, what's the plan for that?
There's not that many.
Well, enough for 80 students.
We only have five classrooms.
Okay, well, so...
And two of them are less than the size, they only house 16 children. So they're small spaces, and I know that Mr. Brock would be happy to have them reincorporated as high school.
I was just wondering.
It's English, it's the social studies hallway of the E-hall, and the world language is adjacent, as well as an EL classroom is nearby. So I'm sure he has...
What you find in any school, if there is space, it is taken.
I I would make a plug that there are many spaces that are needed for special education, pull-out, small groups, that's kinds of things at the high school, that are, we're not necessarily doing everything to the full potential that we could if we had additional breakout spaces. So there's lots of potential there. Yeah.
Okay, thank you for that presentation. There was a lot of really good information there, things that I didn't know. And so I really appreciate you coming forward with that. I think that we would like to hear a little bit more fleshed-out approach to this with more costing information. I, too, think that it, you know, we do, we need to go forward with creating a better space for transitions. It's, you know, these, these, you know, 21-year-olds shouldn't be sitting in, you know, desks that were made for elementary school students. It just is not appropriate at all. So let's hear more, you know, in January.
Thank you.
Okay. Great. All right, we're going to move on to the second part of our learning session here, which has to do with board engagement opportunities. And I believe that this is Director Hockert, who's going to lead us through this.
Thank you, Chair Petrie. I am going to be facilitating the discussion tonight. Director Cherry was unable to join us this evening. So I'm going to be sharing some information that the policy working group has been working on for the last couple of months, some feedback from the community, and kind of bringing everything together kind of at the end of the year to tie up some loose ends, and then give direction to the policy committee to actually dig in and do the work necessary to possibly reform open forum, or if the will of the board is to keep things the way that they are, then that's good to know as well. So, let's see, so the whole point of tonight is just to say very high level and then give some direction to the policy committee. All right, tonight's conversation, our goal is to receive direction from the board regarding open forum and other community engagement opportunities. We're trying to bring everyone up to speed, both our new board members, our current board members, and the community as well, on the evolution of open forum over the past decade, as well as the last several months. We would like to share some community feedback related to open forum. In October, we did a informal survey on crowdicity to get some feedback on community engagement as well as open forum. So we'd like to wrap that up. And we looked at what other districts have been doing in our near vicinity and the greater metro area, and how how they approach open forum differently. And then finally, policy committee will be integrating this feedback into procedure and policy, kind of getting more into the weeds of hammering out what could be a different look to our open forum. One thing before I go on, each one of you at your desk has one of these little sheets. These are some discussion questions that we'll be coming back to at the end of our session. And the first part of this, I'm just going to be quickly downloading as much information as I can, and then the second half will have an opportunity to discuss. So if you do have questions kind of as we go along, just make a little note, and I'll make time before we jump into discussion to kind of go through them. But basically, I'm going to be asking for information on post-it notes to be put up over there. So as you're listening, you might come up with some ideas, and feel free to jot them down as we go. So, thank you. First thing I wanted to kind of draw attention to is our community engagement platform. This is the district community engagement platform. It's been around since 2016. And it go, did we skip a slide? There we go. Oh, board goals, real quick. I'm like, that's excellent. I just wanted to link this back into our board goals and make sure that everybody knows this is our, would fall under number three, which is our increased community trust and engagement, and then our strategies to improve board collaboration, having work sessions like this to kind of talk through and problem-solve together. And then this falls under our 200 series in policy as well. Okay, now let's move on to, there we go, community engagement. So this is our community engagement platform that's been around since 2016. We kind of have five different columns of how we engage with the public. Inform is our first column. That's pretty straightforward. We've got our newsletters and websites. Our discussion tonight falls under the consult category, which is where our public forums and surveys, listening sessions would fall under there. And then we've got the involve, which is more like our community conversations that we just had with boundaries, where the community came out and met with our boundary committees. And then collaborate is even more intensive for community members to get involved on actual committees, like joining the boundary committee or the CDT. And then empower is kind of that highest level of engagement where we actually give the voters the right to make decisions for our district, like in the levy that we just passed this fall. So that's kind of the overview of our community engagement. And then just to highlight, we do have our goals under the consult column is to gather public feedback on school and district issues. And our promise to our community is that we will listen and acknowledge our stakeholders' concerns and consider their new ideas. So one thing I just want to kind of tuck in the back of your mind is how well is our open, current open forum achieving these goals and its purpose for our district. Moving on to that next slide. Excellent. So here's our open forum current policies and procedures. One thing to note, Minnesota Open Meeting Law does not require a public comment period during board meetings, but our school district, our school board, sorry, has elected to provide an open forum during our regular business meetings. So that ends up being about twice a month. And we do not have open forums at every meeting. For instance, tonight, we have a special meeting. So later tonight, we actually don't have open forum. It's just during our regular business meetings. Because it is not required by law, allowing or engaging in open forums gives us as a board an opportunity to kind of mix and match. And we have a lot of freedom and flexibility in how we want to create a public engagement opportunity during our meetings, before our meetings, outside of our meetings altogether. So we do have a lot of flexibility with that. Our current policies, there are four different policies that touch on open forum in different ways. The main one is 206, public participation in school board meetings. That was adopted in 2018. That's kind of the main one that that explains our open forum. 201.3 is our operating norms. That is a huge, very broad policy that touches on a whole bunch of different areas. And that has a section that does talk about open forum. That's been on the books since about 2010. And 201.6, also a 2010 policy that discusses our community engagement and public participation. That platform sheet that you saw in a previous slide would be thanks to that policy. And then 203.1, our rules of order during our board meetings, and that we just reviewed on consent at our last meeting. And it's just how we all engage at board meetings. And then procedure itself is read before each open forum and is also available online. Procedures in general, just a note on the difference between policy and procedure, procedures are more flexible and can be changed with or without board approval. That's kind of just a general rule of thumb to keep in mind when studying policy and procedure. On to our next one. Thank you. Open forum, quick history, quick rundown of the last decade of open forum. As you can see, there have been a number of changes in our open forum procedures that we have been following in this district, from listening sessions plus an open forum. If you notice, in 2010, there were 16 listening sessions. And just to give you an idea, our open forum in this last year, we had roughly 20 open forum sessions for 20 meetings, regular business meetings. So if we did have 20 that year, plus the 16 listening sessions, that was a lot of public engagement with the board for that particular year. Later on, they decided to suspend open forum and just do listening sessions. At some point, listening sessions, or sorry, open forum must have come back in, because then we start changing the numbers of speakers and the amount of time that our speakers are being heard during our regular board meetings. So that happens a little bit more. And then when we jumped down to spring of 2020, everything moves online, thanks to COVID. And that was the first time we had open forums virtually, which then returned to in-person when we all came back to meet in person. And then this fall, we did move from an in-person sign-up to an online sign-up, as well as the time period of when you did that, which is now on our website. And then the final piece was temporarily moving our open forum to the end of meetings to make sure that we attended to the the business that we needed to get done during a time when there was a lot of disruptions in our meetings. So that kind of brings you up to speed. One, sorry, can you flip back one more slide? Some previous feedback on open forum, on why things have changed over over the years. Things that have come up in the past is that open forum was intimidating to formally address the board, so there was less engagement, that there's no opportunity for the administration or the board to respond, not accessible for everybody to come and give open forum speeches and/or sign up for them, and then safety concerns as well. So those were some of the reasons in the past for having these adjustments in our open forum. Thanks. On to the next one. All right. So then we took a look at our current open forum model and the data that we pulled for the last two years, from 2020, the 2020-year calendar year, and 2021 calendar year as well. And I've listed just kind of some questions that I was focused on in gathering and trying to analyze this data. So I was trying to figure out how many individuals are actually taking advantage of our open forum, and then how many individuals are returning again, and how often. And then what portion, or yeah, proportion of the time, does the board hear from previously-engaged voices versus newly-engaged voices? So I kind of split them into two categories, previously-engaged, meaning they've come more than once, and then newly-engaged, this is their first time coming to speak to us. And then finally, the overarching question is that I'm posing to the rest of you is, is the board satisfied with our current, with our recent engagement using our current model for open forum, or is there a desire for some improvements? So then, we get into our open forums, just some basic stats. We've had 40 meetings in the past two years. In those 40 meetings, we've had 112 individuals give 202 speeches. So people gave multiple speeches, we just counted them as an individual and their speeches separately for the data. There were 77 individuals who spoke once, which is 77 speeches, and then 35 individuals spoke multiple times, totaling 125 speeches. In our meetings, we have an average of five speakers per meeting, and we've had three meetings in the past two years that had the full slate of 15 speakers. And in all three of those, we had individuals who were not able to get on the list for those nights. Continuing on. So this is kind of a visual breakdown of that data that I was just talking about. I wanted to see kind of visually how much time we are hearing from individuals, and what what percentages of our time are we hearing from different groups of people? The newly-engaged, which is a 77 individuals, is about 38% of of our time spent hearing from new people. And then 19 individuals came back two to three times, which is about 18%. 10 individuals spoke three to four times, which is 17% of the total two-year time. And then three individuals spoke five to six times, which is 8%. And then three individuals spoke between 10 and 13 times, which was 17%. So continuing on, I know I'm running through this real fast. So continuing on, I know I'm running through this real fast. Onto our Crowdedity feedback. This was our survey that we did this past fall. You can see the dates on the bottom there, September 30th through October 10th. And during this time period, that was like 11 days, we had two different challenges running. Crowdedity was a platform that we, this is the first time we've used it. It is similar to our thought exchange that we've done in the past. So this was a new format to try, and it allowed us to present two different challenges. The first challenge was to focus on what other ideas outside of open forum would the public like to see us engage in, to further engage students, families, staff, community members. And then challenge two was more focused on open forum. How do you feel about our current open forum model? Then, flip into the next, thank you. We ended up having 77 individuals, individual users, participate, and they came up with 32 different ideas. And then the breakdown of the challenges is right there. We had about 1,200 views of our posts. And I believe you can view a post without being a user, right? I'm pretty sure that's how it works, because I was able to view and I never signed up as a user. So I would go in and at least take a look at what people were saying as, as the information was happening in real time. And then if you were doing voting or commenting, though, you needed to be a user to do that. So 685 votes and 62 comments. And I did a quick screenshot, for those who may not be familiar with the, the format. Individuals, it was a very open-ended opportunity to engage, where an individual would sign on, they would pick a challenge, they would name the challenge, so they'd give their own title, and then they would write as little or as much as they wanted in their post. So sometimes they'd have one idea, sometimes two, three, four, five different ideas in one little post. And then other individuals can click on that post and read it. And when you open it up, there are, you can rank it. There's five star, four star, three, two, one star. And individuals can give their support to those ideas based on the star ratings. And they can also comment, if you can see the little bubble at the bottom there with one, three, and one, those are the number of comments each one of those ideas received. So it was great in being open-ended. It was really tricky to analyze all the information. So in order to pull the meaning out of this survey, I ended up reading through each of these comments and teasing out the ideas for each post. And then with each post, or sorry, with each idea, I would give them a number of votes. And the way I figured out my votes was whoever wrote it got one vote. And then I looked at just the five-star ratings. So people who I knew were totally on board with this idea or this group of ideas, I would say, okay, so if you opened that first one, it was, I think they had four or five stars. So then it would be one original post plus the four five-star ratings. So then I would say that one got five votes. And then if the idea would come up again later, I would use the same formula to add additional votes to those individual ideas. So that was the formula that I used in order to get the data in the next slide, to kind of give us the meaning of what people were saying to us. So there were definitely some clear themes that emerged from the data. The first big one was an overarching theme of, do we want to keep open forum? Do we want to end open forum? And those who want to just change open forum, but keep in different, in various ways. The people who wanted to keep open forum, that data was along the theme of like, if they wanted to keep it, keep open forum at the beginning of the meeting, that got filtered into there. If they want to keep on, online, nope, sorry, in-person sign-up would have been a keep open forum, keep it recorded, kind of the way things that we have been doing them, that would, that fell under the keep open forum. One piece that also came up with that was keep it, but enforce rules that are already in place as, sorry, as well. End open forum, that kind of fell into two categories. There was flat out, end it, we don't want it anymore, that's it. And then there was kind of a separate category of, we want something outside of our regular board meetings, like listening sessions. And that kind of, the way it was worded, it sounded like, we don't want open forum, we want something else. So that's kind of how I ended up in the end open forum category. And then the change open forum was more comments that were very clearly talking about open forum, adjustments to open forum as it exists. So the next piece is, there were very clear dueling ideas that emerged from the data as well. One was on sign-up, and it was very clear that online sign-up had more support from the users of this survey. Keeping, or putting it back at the beginning of meetings, which it's now back at the beginning of meetings, had more support. Not recording open forum. The way that we were teasing the data, it definitely was the open forum piece of the meeting, not that we would not record the whole meeting. But there was quite a bit of support for not videotaping, live streaming, or recording our open forum speeches. And then for signs, there was a slightly more supportive banning of signs than allowing signs. And at the time that this meeting, or that the survey was run, there was a lot of controversy around signs. So that became, that came out in the data, for sure. All right, continuing on. Other engagement ideas outside, if you remember, challenge one was to ask for other ideas to engage with the board. And those kind of emerged in different ways. So that's what this lovely thought bubble, or picture bubble, not sure what this is called, but graphic is meant to show. Listening sessions was definitely the top of that list with like 46 votes, according to my formula. Then emails was another one that came out. People were suggesting to email the board instead of coming to open forum to talk to us. Somebody suggested having the board meetings on different days, which is something that we explored, I think at the beginning of last year. And because of other logistical issues outside of our control, it didn't, didn't work out. So we're, at least for the present, we're stuck on Thursdays. Another idea was an advisory committee, which I think has been used in the past, where community members would be informing the administration of topics coming from the community directly. And then another idea was a community input form, which was basically a mini survey that would be sent out with every board meeting with agenda items tied directly to it. So that was a pretty intensive one, to get very specific feedback on every single board meeting. So, all interesting ideas and things to consider outside of the open forum context. All right. So then, we, I decided to check on you guys and send out a quick poll over the weekend, which I sincerely appreciate, the quick turnaround on that. And once I saw the data from Crowdedity, I was really curious to see where everybody was just temporarily landing. I fully expect that ideas and positions will move as we have the discussion as well. But just to kind of get an initial read, the first question actually was the four, had four pieces to it. The one that suggested no, like, end open forum, nobody was interested in completely ending open forum. And I had actually teased out the listening sessions from ending open forum. In the other data, they were very clearly linked, but for us, I figured it would be easier if we just kept them separate. So that was the preferred choice, with four board members interested in that option, two board members thinking, keep the status quo, and then one board member wanting to make changes to open forum. Then the sign-up. We've got six board members interested in keeping online sign-up. Oh, one piece from the data as well, people liked online sign-up, but they definitely wanted us to tweak it. And they did give us some suggestions on how to tweak it and make it a little better for, for users. Onto timing, beginning of the meeting, that seemed to be what most board members are interested in, keeping an open forum at the beginning of the meeting. And then recording of open forum speeches, there was more of a mixed review on whether to keep it, not do it, or just not quite sure where to fall on that one yet. And then the last one was signs. Banning signs was the most favorite of that option, but there was one board member who did a write-in option, and let's see if I can find it, there it is. To choose the other option, that I don't like the idea of a ban, may, maybe hard to enforce. Worry more about signs being a distraction to the audience members and escalating tensions, needs to learn more. So that was the feedback we got on signs as well. All right. Last piece of data, and then I'm opening up for questions. So as part of this, we also looked at what other districts are doing around us. There were eight different districts that we looked into, and this is kind of some, small snippets of what we learned about what other people are doing near us. Unrecorded listening sessions in place of open forum, there were two districts that are currently doing that. 191, which is the Burnsville, Eagan Savage area, and 831, which is Forest Lake. And then the rest, the other six, are having open forum during their regular business meetings, but they split kind of into two groups. Half of them do a record and livestream, us included, and half of them do not. The ones that do not do the recording are, let's see, White Bear, that's the first one. White Bear, Matamidi, and South Wash. And then 622, which is North St. Paul, Maplewood, Oakdale, Prior Lake, and us, we are the ones who record and livestream. And then, just for fun, sign-up sheets. One district does the sign-up sheet in person, that's to Prior Lake. And then the rest of us, and actually, sorry, 622 was supposed to land on there, it just, I didn't realize it got missed. So the other five do an online before the meeting, and in each of those, they also have a, like, card or some kind of data sheet where they ask a bunch of questions. Some of them actually do go as far as prioritizing who's going to be getting priority seats or not. None of them, except for, I believe, us, we are the only ones who do the first come, first serve on the way we've done it online up to this point. So, all right. Before we jump into this, are there any slides that you guys need me to go back to for clarification that didn't make sense, or you'd like me to go into more detail before we jump into our discussion?
I actually have a lot of concerns with your presentation.
Would you, are there clarifications?
The data you choose to present is interesting, and it feels very targeted. If you want to go back into the meetings in 2021, I'm not sure why we had to go back two years, unless you're, you're trying to include the separation where the community was really engaged and, and outspoken, you know, at that time to get the numbers higher. But 43 meetings in the last 24 months, 645 potential open forum speakers, that were, there was sort of 202, which was actually 31% of the, of the meetings were utilized. Of those 43 meetings, five actually filled open forum capacity, which was 11%. 27 meetings had three or less speakers, which was 62.7% of the meetings had three or less speakers.
Is this your own data that you've been gathering? Or I'm just curious where you're getting these numbers?
These numbers are off of your numbers, actually, but the way you, you chose to present them fits your narrative. And I think they need to be, it needs to be explained to the community of what.
Can you explain which, which part of it you're looking at and changing the numbers of?
I'm not changing any numbers, all of the numbers are there. So in 43 meetings, when you go back and count it all up in the last 24 months, there was 645 speaker potential. That's regular dated in, 43 meetings, 15 per, that's normal information.
Got it.
In 2021, since Bev's been chair, January 7 to the current, there were 22 meetings, 330 potential open forum speakers, and there was actually a total of 89 speakers out of 330, which is 27%. Of those 22 meetings, four filled up the open forum capacity, which was only 18% of those meetings. 13 meetings had three, 13 meetings had three or less speakers, which was only 59%. You know, let's see.
So Director Riley, if, if you found completely different data than.
It's not different data, it's the data that's there.
But which, which. The way that you're anal, hang on one second. The, and, the way that you're analyzing this data.
Yeah.
You've definitely done some homework on this, and I would have very much appreciated if you had shared, if you had these concerns ahead of time with how I was.
How many times am I supposed to come ahead of time with everything? You present to me this information, you present things and, and mock up your own information. I get things handed to me at the last minute all the time. I am working non-stop on, on things that get thrown at me, even with board meetings. You want to control every narrative that is displayed for the public.
That is, that was not my.
Yes, that's what's happening right now. And because I'm showing my perspective of the data, which is different from the picture you're trying to paint, what I'm showing is that there isn't a problem.
I don't think that she's trying to show any sort of a narrative. I think that, that what, we have had some issues with, I mean, there's, there's a reason why we switched open forum to the latter part of the, of the meeting, because we were having disruptions in the audience, and we had to close down meetings, we had to close down a meeting at one point. So it is legitimate, and it is appropriate, and is advisable for us to take a look at our open forum and just see whether we want to make some changes.
The meeting you closed down did not happen until the day you flipped the open forum to the end of the meeting. And, and that's when that happened, the disruption in the closed meeting happened. We can go into the Crowdedity and, and what we paid for Crowdedity, and how many people utilize it.
Do you have questions about the presentation?
43,000 voters we have. You are, are making a, a basis on your recommendations of, what was the total on that 78 people?
You know, I don't think that she's making any sort of, she's, she's putting out information.
Out of 43,000.
Director Riley, she's putting out information here for us to discuss and decide if we want to make some changes. I mean, it's clear that you want to keep the status quo, but I think we all should have an opportunity to talk about this.
That's what I'm doing.
And decide whether we want to make some changes. Director Sherman.
I think, first of all, thank you for gathering all this information. This is, I really appreciated reading it, and I can appreciate the time it took to, to go ahead and do this. So thank you for your work on policy and, and related to this. I think that one thing that struck me is that when we look at our people taking advantage of open forum as it exists today, I was struck by the fact that more people participated in the online survey than they did in open forum through, I mean, we had a much higher percentage of people, individuals coming in and sharing with us information. So it just might be, one thing I noted was, you know, in addition to in-person feedback and email, that more regular surveys that are predictable and people start to understand the tool might actually lend to some more broad-based feedback in some greater numbers, so.
Um, yes, Vivian.
Okay, so I have several questions. One is, I just, Tina, you're quoting a bunch of numbers, and that's fine, but I don't, to me, like, I was looking at the presentation, so if we're going to talk about the numbers, I think we should talk about whichever slide they refer to, so we can all go to that slide and understand what exactly you're, you're talking about. I think the other thing is, when we say there's, you know, 43,000 voters or whatever, I don't think we can expect that every voter is watching the school board and is as interested. So you're not going to get all of those voters coming into, to open forum. I think another thing is, one of the reasons, like what Allison said, is when people do the surveys, like, it's very hard to talk in front of people for a lot of people. Like, it, it's nerve-wracking. And then having it all televised to have people pick it apart is also nerve-wracking for people. So I think it's good to have different ways of people being able to, you know, we can gather feedback and then talk about the feedback without having to put people on the spot to have to get here. And people work to, right? So having to get here and then stand on, in a microphone, talk to a board, I think a lot of people are intimidated by that, so. Anyhow, those are my thoughts.
Tina.
We have other opportunities for people to engage with the board and, and give their viewpoints other than open forum. I find it a little bit inequitable when you want to utilize the online sign-up, right, for convenience, but you won't utilize televising open forum to engage the community or let the community be engaged in issues that impact the community. So you want the community involved, or you don't want the community involved. I think it's, it's just seems very targeted by the numbers that you have put out and those that you, you really aren't interested in, in, you know, hearing from.
So the information that came to us, I was very careful to let the data speak for itself and, in the, in its rawest form, if possible. But it, we definitely are not getting a read from every single individual, because that was a choice to engage in the surveys. And a lot of the information was also garnered from stories, from people that are, are coming in as well. That did not show up in the data, but it did at least encourage me to dig into and do some more research in this, and to get the board, information from the rest of the board on whether we want to move forward in looking into reforms or keeping things the way they are. But as it stands right now, there are no. But as it stands right now, there are no decisions made on whether we are going to do any of this. So that is actually my very first question in our quick little board poll. Um, and then I would like to continue into the discussion itself, because we are down to, like, five minutes before we need to move into our board session. So I do need to get information from you guys to bring back to our work session.
Can we just have Pete speak for a second here before?
Oh, sure. I know. We, um, we're talking lots of numbers, but I think before you even talk numbers is to ask ourselves, what is the purpose of open forum? Is it to inform the board? And I think it's two, two different things. So we have speakers come up, and a lot of times it's an oration rather than a conversation. And I was at an event earlier today, and I had some conversation with some people. And I think I got a lot more information from the conversation. Just somebody having a one-on-one, a little bit of back and forth, you could kind of clarify what they're saying. That doesn't happen when somebody's giving a three-minute speech. So, um, I'll back to my original question. What's the purpose of an open forum? Is it to inform the board, or is it to engage the community? So, then I'll have other points later, but that's for now.
Excellent. Can I do my quick poll? So, the first thing I just want to get a read on where we're standing right now. Is the board satisfied with our current model of open forum as it stands without any changes? Um, I just want to do a quick thumbs up. This is not an official vote in any way. Um, just if you think that we should keep things the way they are, give me a thumbs up for yes. And then I'll do the math. All right, we've got one for yes. Doing the math, we've got six for no on that one. And then is there a desire for improvement to open forum? Same format, thumbs up for yes. So I'm counting my thumbs. So six on the yes, and then doing the math, one on the no. So it does seem like the will of the board is leading us in the direction of wanting to investigate some opportunities for, um, enhancing our public engagement, possibly. Public engagement opportunities through open forum or through other means as well. So the next part, our board discussion, this goes back to that lovely sheet I gave you on the post-it notes. Hopefully you've had some time to mull things over. Um, I am looking for something from you guys on what improvements, if any, resonated with you. If nothing's resonating, put no change as your answer. Just one to three top things that you would like to consider in adjusting for, um, open forum, listening sessions, whatever that's gonna look like. And then the second question, what type of environment do we wish to create to encourage public engagement? And for this one, I'm looking for adjectives or descriptors for, um, what, what do we want to, what, what do we want people to feel, um, when they come to engage with us? In order to encourage that more engagement. So what I'm gonna have you do is each write one answer on each post-it note. And then I'd like everybody to quick share. I know we are running really short on time. If you could give me just some, uh, feedback on why you chose what you chose, and then we'll stick them up on the board so that they can be recorded and passed along to the policy committee. So I'll give you guys just a second to write them up.
So you, we can do as many as we want, or you just want three, or what?
Um, ideally, your top three.
Okay.
And then.
Can we write it on here and share out? Or do you have to have it on a post-it note?
Well, I was gonna have the post-it notes be typed up for us.
Oh, okay.
But I'll, I mean, if you would like to share your additional notes.
I'm just thinking from a time standpoint, if we.
Sure, sure. I know, we're running short on time. So yes, whatever's easier. If you need post-it notes, we'll post them up.
Do you want us just to go put them up here, or?
Um, hang on to them, I'll, just so that you know them for reference. And then we'll put them up after you share out. All right, hopefully wrap it up in maybe another minute. And then hopefully we'll keep it to ten minutes for sharing out, so that we can get ourselves into our regular meeting, well, special meeting tonight. All right, looks like folks are mostly done. Does someone want to volunteer to go first, or you just wanna circle around the table?
Do we just put it on the board, or?
Well, I'll have you just read them off first and kind of explain them, and then go put them on the board. Do you want to go first, Annie?
Okay.
Okay, excellent.
My number one is for what improvements, if any, resonated with you. Uh, for me, to have intentional community engagements. Uh, so what I mean by this is to, for the board to organize community engagement. Uh, we can have forums, the community can be there, and we can have, you know, uh, the discussion about issues. Here, with open forum, it's a one-way track. Uh, there's no response. People come out there, say what they want. We can always have that by doing a survey, which is my number two. So if there are concerns and all that, if we can do that by, you know, sending out a survey, people provide answers or whatever the issues are. Uh, so, but, um, I don't know what the benefit is if we can't respond to, um, people when they discuss. There's no engagement there. Um, so it's, um, to me, I think, truthfully, for me, it's a waste of time. When we can't provide answers to anyone, all we do is listen, and, um, nothing comes out of it at the end of the day. But we can get that through a survey. But then encourage sub-community groups. So from the intentional community engagement, we can encourage sub-community groups to continue to discuss these issues. So we're intentionally providing an opportunity for community, the community to present its voice, but also a voice that there will be an action. Uh, so we will take action. So all of these are intentional for there to be an outcome. Um, I don't see that with the way things are currently. So those are my top three.
Excellent, thank you, Annie. And then for the environment, did you answer that one yet?
For the environment, I wrote, uh, my number one is no recordings. I don't see the benefit of recording open forum, because it's, again, like I said, there's no engagement. Um, unfortunately, uh, since I've been on the board, um, it hasn't been one that has provided any kind of benefit. This is my opinion. Uh, the truth is, how do we respond to, uh, members of our community if they have issues? Um, I think the back and forth here, not the back and forth, but the noise and all of the, you know, the things that have happened over the last couple of months. Um, it kind of defeats the purpose in terms of wanting the board to hear what you have to say. And, and also, there's no opportunity for us to really take action on those issues, because it's more sometimes disrespect. Uh, it's more of an insult. It's more of an abuse. Uh, but really, we want substantial, very, um, we want things that we can truly, um, put into action and have an outcome for the community, uh, in terms of what those issues are. I don't see that in most cases. Keep the online signup. I think the online is, um, signing up here, so before, you know, employees, sorry, bigger part, before community members come in here, and sometimes we have, it can be a bit chaotic, but I think the online signup has been really smooth. It gives a lot of people an opportunity who work, uh, to be able to sign up and kind of organize their time before they get out here. But if they have to run out here after work, some of them will miss the signup, and that creates a problem, because it actually, signup is at three o'clock. Most people are actually still working, you know? But the online gives you an opportunity to just go in at, uh, the time that you have, right in front of your computer on your phone, and sign up to, sign up to have a space here. So I think we should keep that. And then number three is, because we always read, Bev always reads a statement before open forum, a statement of respect. Um, unfortunately, that's not what happens when it actually occurs. Uh, so I, my suggestion will be, if we decide to continue with it, to cut off the mic. Uh, if there is abuse, uh, or it becomes, um, erratic or chaotic, uh, it's of no use. It serves no purpose for us. And I think, uh, we're here, we've been, uh, we've been put in this position to work for the community. Uh, so I see no reason why, it's, this is a volunteer opportunity for all of us. Anyone can decide to be here. But to sit and be, uh, listening to people abuse you or make statements that are, you know, out of line, when really we should be respecting each other as adults. And if you want people to listen or hear what you have to say, I think it's fair that you show some respect as well. So nobody here is here because they don't want to be here. We all volunteered to be here, and the community put us here. Uh, so I think that it's important for members of our community to also understand that, um, we all have our lives. The truth is, we don't have to do this, but most of us were courageous enough to step up to be here. Uh, I really think that it's important that as much as we accord you the same respect, that you accord board members that same respect. And that's how I really feel. So if we have people abusing and making statements that are out of line, I think we should cut it off. Cut the mic off.
Thank you, Annie. Do you mind sticking them up on the board over there? Get a chance to get up and move around. Someone want to go next?
Um, I'll go next. Um, uh, under what improvements, if any, resonated with you? Uh, one of the things that, that I would really like to see is to have, um, uh, regular engagement with our community, um, through crowdicity, um, on various issues that, that may be important to them. I think that this, the opportunity for them to not only just put their, um, their views out there, but also just to sort of add to and vote on other kinds of views, I think gives us a little bit more clarity about where the community might be on certain kinds of things. And I also think that there are just lots of people who just can't come to meetings. And, um, and so this just gives another opportunity for them to be able to, to let us know what they're thinking. Because whatever it is, whether it's email or crowdicity or open forum, it's all about speaking to the board. You know, it's not supposed to be about speaking to the camera. It's supposed to be about, um, letting us know what they think. Um, and so in that vein, um, I also believe that we ought to explore, um, unrecorded listening sessions at the beginning of the meeting. Um, and I'm not exactly sure what that would look like exactly, encouraging people to come and, um, and speak to us, and whether that's, you know, as Pete said, you know, an, uh, in an, an interactive process, or if we just listen to their concerns, kind of similar to open forum. Um, I just feel as though that might be a, a greater opportunity for us to actually hear what people have to say. Um, and then I also just feel as though we should ban signs. I think that they are just simply disruptive, and I think they have no business in a business meeting.
Excellent. And then the second question, what type of environment?
You know, I didn't have a lot to say about that, to be honest. Um, I just feel as though we, we, we need to try to engage people in lots of different ways. And, 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 you know, whether we do it at our business meeting, whether we do crowdicity, whether we, you know, we get a lot of emails, and, and that's actually, I think, a really valuable way to, to learn what people have to say. Um, you know, previous boards also used to do, um, listening sessions at various schools. And, you know, that might be another method that we can explore. Um, but I just think, you know, trying different ways to see, you know, how to listen, you know, how to, you know, people are really busy, and we know that. And so we just need to try to, try to engage as many people as we can, you know? Um, and that should be the goal, to engage as many people as possible.
Okay, thank you. Did you want to go next?
Sure. Um, so before I was on the board, I've, at different times, had conversations with everybody around the table here, at different times, and they've been productive, uh, conversations back and forth. And then there was one time I even came and I spoke to the board, and I was kind of nervous, and that was just a speech, and I don't know how effective it was. But I got a lot more out of the conversation, so I'd like to see more of that happening. One suggestion I'll throw out, uh, just as a brainstorm, is open forum, uh, one meeting per month. So it's kind of the, the middle child answer of, uh, giving some opportunity for people to speak, but it does not command so much of our time, so I'll throw that out there. And, uh, and then the time that's freed up by not having it one time a month, somehow, like Bev just said, some engagement with the community. Maybe we go out to PTA meetings and let them speak. Those are involved people, and they have something to say, or anything we can come up with with further brainstorming. Uh, for the environment, um, maybe we could, you know, before the open forum, there, there's a talk about what the purpose of it is. Maybe something could be added to say that the purpose is to inform the board. So I'll go back to that, that point, is to inform the board rather than to rally. It's not the time for any kind of a political rally or a, uh, you know, to, for, for the theater that it sometimes becomes. And, um, just to make that point, so that if we need to clarify afterwards, hey, that's not the purpose of open forum, is to, you know, um, rally, rally your troops. So, um, and just make that part of the intro.
Good feedback, thank you. Trying to put your post-its?
Sure.
Add them to the board? Thank you. Uh, Vivian?
Um, I guess, uh, some improvements, I think, you know, I think the signup online is good, but then, um, maybe we could have the signup in person too. So if people signed up, and there were four people who signed up online, and then there's a bunch of slots left, you could have it as a signup pre-meeting also, because, like, I don't, some people won't have gotten to the online thing. And then I also think, um, having it, um, I, I like the idea of some listening sessions. It feels very strange to say, you know, we will not respond to you, and then have people, like, talk at you, and then... That's it, right? I mean, and so it just feels kind of one-sided, and I don't, I don't like that feeling. But also, I think, I know a lot of people want the open forum in the beginning, but I, as someone who kind of works late a lot, it's hard to get here, to sign up, and then to talk in the beginning of a meeting, I think, for some people. So I think it would be, I personally think it's better later in the, in the schedule. Um, and then, let's see. I think when open forum, when we have times when people have a lot to say, like, there's some issue going on and people are upset, maybe that's not a time to have an open forum, but it's a time to have a listening session, so you can really understand and talk with people about what they're upset about, rather than, you know, just have not, people not be able to, you know, get to the open forum mic, I guess. Um, and I think, you know, we get these comments in email, which I think are, are good, and oft, often we don't respond to them, because you can't respond to everything. But I think it might be nice to be able to summarize some of those comments, put some thought into what the answers are, because sometimes when people say stuff, it's clear they don't really have an understanding of what's behind the scenes going on or happening. It might be nice, like, kind of like reading, um, Jimmy Kimmel's Mean Tweets, right? You could read out some of the, like, not, like, the people who are saying them, but like, the people are saying this, and, and this is the board's, you know, response to that. Like, this is why, this is not, you know, what, what our feeling is about it, or what the actual facts are about it, so that people do get an answer, because, I, I mean, they're sending the, the emails because they want to be heard. So it'd be nice to show them that they're heard. That's it.
Great, thank you, Vivian. Um, did you do the environment question?
The environment, yes. Um, so open forum, I said, should be used to express concerns or support. And presently, some people are using it to have a soapbox for unpleasant attacks. And it would be better to have discussions and not maybe tape attacks. it would be better to have discussions and not maybe tape attacks and then publish them because it's not really, I just don't, I don't think it's a positive thing to have people just like saying mean things and then we just publish it when there's no response to these attacks.
All right. Thank you, Vivian. Would you mind adding your post-its over there?
Sure.
Tina, did you want to go next?
Sure. As I've said, I don't believe there is an open forum problem. I think this board just jumped on the NSBA bandwagon. The numbers demonstrate that there isn't a problem. I think one thing that can improve is to respond to speakers at the next meeting as was done in the past and that's a chair decision of doing or not doing. So we have done that in the past and past superintendents have done that in the past. What kind of environment? Well, I would want one that welcomed their voice. The point of open forum is to give feedback to the board before decisions are made. Whether we agree with them or not, tough decisions are not supposed to be easy. By allowing the community to be heard, it helps board members to weigh the complexities of some of the decisions that are on the table that impact this community. So I disagree that this is a time where the community can really express how much the decision to be made impacts them and weighs on them. And I think it's not supposed to be easy up here. It is hard. I've been criticized since I started and I've been criticized by the board chair up here when, when she disagreed with the reading literacy levels. And so I think it's an important tool that we have and I think it should be left as it is. And I think I would also, for the environment, I would have the sign up at the door so the community feels welcome. Because we've had community members come that have wanted to speak, were not able to speak because the sign up, signups were shut down electronically. And this person isn't super engaged in everything, doesn't know all the ins and outs and came here expecting to be able to sign up at the door and speak, you know, within the last month over boundary issues. And so I think that by hearing their voice and allowing speakers to remain and continue, whether we like what they say or not, that's part of our job. And, and I, I think we should just leave it as is, except we could probably answer at the following meeting.
All right. Thank you, Tina. Would you mind throwing your post-its over there? That leaves you and me, Allison. Do you want me to go first or do you, do you want to go next?
You can go first, true.
Sure.
For mine, my improvements that resonated with me, I'm also very interested in listening sessions and ideally with the full board if possible. Traditionally, you, listening sessions are with only a handful of board members, but I would be interested in kind of pursuing an opportunity for people to come speak to the full board and then following up with questions or having some kind of small conversation. But I do know that we'd have to limit, at least for time. So I'm, I'm, that's kind of my top choice. I'm also interested in doing an unrecorded listening session and not continuing to record our open forum speeches. The more I have been digging into what other districts are doing, that is kind of the trend that people are going and the, what has come out in this past fall, in this current school year, is a lot of people who are making statements that are misleading and without having an opportunity to engage at, during open forum. We get misinformation coming out into the public. In addition to that, there are issues with data privacy and it's tricky for new, particularly newly engaged community members to know kind of where the lines are for data privacy and professional engagement during our open forums. So I feel like that leaves the districts who are recording in a position of legal exposure. If we don't shut it down quickly enough or if information slips through, that, that really would upset individuals or expose individuals in our staff or our students as well. So for me, that was kind of a big reason for not wanting to continue to record those open forum speeches or the listening sessions and just have them more of an informal conversation with the board. The other, I got lots of feedback that the online sign up was, seems to be preferred. Definitely needs a little bit of tweaking and how we do that, so I'd like to explore that as well. And then for the environment, the two things I wrote down is to have an inviting environment, to have people want to come and engage with us and not be intimidated by coming and talking to us as board members. And then to have more of a conversational, informal feel to that environment to hopefully encourage more families or community members to come and talk to us. So that's where I landed for my answers. And then Allison, you're up next.
So I, I had been thinking a lot to Pete's point about kind of what's the purpose of open forum? What's the goal? And for me, it's just one part of a broader engagement plan. I think Bev, you mentioned that as well. And so for me, it's an opportunity for the board to hear from the community members who feel impassioned enough to come speak to us. Whether it's critical or positive, it doesn't matter. It's just a time for the community to come talk to the, to the board. The type of environment that I want any engagement that we have would be welcoming. Specifically, I, I'm looking for more full circle kind of feedback in terms of leading to more information being shared or a resolution. And so whether that's here or in other areas, just, it seems like we have a lot of one-way communication and I like something a little bit more conversational, a little bit more informal, more constructive, inclusive. I'd like to hear just from different diverse perspectives, you know, whether it's students or staff or community members, parents, guardians, just maybe different, you know, knowing who people are and how they relate to our schools would be helpful. So maybe that's something we could include in a sign up form. It would just help me, any kind of information that could help me process where the feedback is coming from. And then I just put convenient. I really want it to be convenient for people. So I like Vivian, I like the, if the online sign up sheet isn't full. I, I think we could certainly have a physical sign in sheet here if there were spots open. My suggestions for improvements are, you know, more regular and predictable online reaching out, perhaps with some more, some better output for the data aspect of it, like the backend. I know Crowdedity was a lot of good information, but you had to really read through it and spend a lot of time. So it'd be nice to have more top line, data-driven information for the board to consider. I, the tweaks to the online form, I fully support. I like the open forum before a business meeting. I like the idea of some sort of listening session or, I mean, maybe, I don't know, I just like the, maybe a little bit less formal approach to the conversation and something where if we know in advance what they're talking about, that we can maybe come prepared to bring more information to the community member on the topic that they really are interested in learning more about. Let's see, I, and I like the idea of going out into the community. That was something I had on here. It's, we talk to our teachers all the time about meeting kids where they are. And I think we as a board need to do a better job, meeting parents and families and students and staff where they are. So whether it's PTA or, you know, maybe we have listening sessions regularly at one of the middle school, both of the middle schools, or maybe we go out to sporting event. I mean, I don't know. I don't know what the casual, what a casual nature of it could be. Certainly they don't want to see us at a, at a concert, but you know what I mean? Just something that's, you know, I don't know, more conversational. And I, I am on the, I'm a little bit, for me, the recording is something I struggle with because I go back to the purpose. I go back to the purpose of it's for the community to engage with the board, not for the board to give community members a platform to broadcast their opinions with the public. So I think I'm leaning a little bit more towards not recording that. I'm kind of still processing that a little bit, but I do, I worry about the liability. I worry about if we, you know, it becomes a little bit more subjective by the chair if you're cutting someone off. Did they cross the line? Do you, do you know where the line is? And ultimately I go back to the purpose is constructive feedback, positive or negative, to be shared with the board. And so I think we did like a survey not that long ago, Morris Leatherman, that said kind of how can people get their feedback on, or their information on the community is word of mouth and that our district is really more word of mouth than other districts. And so sometimes I do, I'm concerned that if we don't kind of complete that circle, that, that feedback loop, and maybe it can be done in other ways, that we're letting misinformation hang out there and not correcting it. So that's kind of where I'm at.
All right. Thank you. Can I have your sheet if you're not going to? Awesome. All right. We've gone over a little bit. Thank you.
Yes, we have.
But good information, thank you.
But really, really good information. I sincerely thank all of you for participating and sharing your thoughts on all of this. I think the committee's going to have some work to do. The policy committee will have some work to dig into this, but this has given us some at least direction and the plan is to bring it back to policy committee and work on it the next couple of months and then, and then report back to the board on possible solutions to discuss further and move forward with making some adjustments, since that seems to be the direction that the majority of us want to go. So I sincerely thank all of you for participating and for your thoughts and your engagement. So with that, I'll turn it back over to Chair Petrie.
Okay. Thank you. Thanks, Katie, and thanks for all the efforts that you put into that. I know it was a lot of hard work and it was very thorough. So thank you for that. Okay, that brings us to the end of our work session. Are we willing to just launch right into our board meeting now?
Yeah.
Okay, all right. I call to order this meeting of Stillwater Area Public Schools, District 834, special meeting for Tuesday, December 21st. Joan, can you please call the roll?
Director Hockert?
Here.
Director Kelsberg?
Yes, here.
Director Porbeni?
Yep.
Director Riley?
Here.
Director Sherman?
Here.
Director Patawa?
Here.
Chair Petrie?
Here.
You have a quorum.
Thank you. The first item on our agenda is the consent agenda and it consists of A, minutes of December 7th closed session, B-
Chair Petrie, can you, approval of the agenda?
The agenda.
Sorry, what?
Approval of the agenda.
The agenda.
Oh, that's not on here. Okay, all right.
It, there was revised.
Sorry.
Set out this afternoon, sorry.
I'm looking at the revised one, but okay. Can I get a motion to accept the agenda?
I'll, I'll move to the agenda.
Director Hockert, is there a second? Director Sherman, all those in favor of accepting the agenda, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Okay, motion passes. Now we move on to the consent agenda, which consists of A, minutes of December 7th closed session, B, minutes of December 9th business meeting, C, dispersment register, D, accept gifts and donations, E, treasurer's report, F, who knew it data analytics solution, G, Afton Lakeland Elementary Fall Zone surfacing, and H, human resources personnel report. Can I get a motion?
Can I pull C?
Yes. Can I get a motion to accept A, B, D, E, F, G, and H? Director Sherman, second, Director Porbeni, all those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Motion passes. Under C, we'll go to, to discussion in just a second. Can I get a motion to accept dispersments? Director Sherman, is there a second? Director Hockert? Okay, discussion. Director Riley?
I just want, I have one I want to pull out and it's for invoice number 1385 CISO Communications in the amount of $12,500. Research and marketing plan. What is the research and marketing plan? Is that the Crowdedity? Is that more than Crowdedity?
I can speak to that because I was in finance.
All right, Director Sherman?
That was in the last, at the last meeting. That is a grant for adult basic education. And so that's, that was, was on the last agenda.
The communications is?
Yes.
Okay.
Yep, that was on the, they're part of that marketing plan.
Okay, I appreciate that. Thank you. That's all my, my only question.
Okay, all those in favor of accepting the dispersment register, please raise your hand and say aye.
Aye.
Those opposed? Nay. Motion passes. Okay, we move on to action items. We have one tonight and that is certify the 2021 payable 2022 tax levy. Dr. Tine?
Thank you. Good evening, everybody. Could I make one request? When you take a look at Oak Park, would you do something about the heat in this building by any chance? That's okay with you?
It's like so cold.
It's, can't see my breath, but just about.
We're feeling the heat, so.
I, you have three documents in front of you. If you could go back one page, please, Joan. Nope, the other way. One more, keep going.
I have two pages.
Oh, that's all you have?
Yep.
This is a document up in front that just basically says, this is the levy that you're going to approve and this was the levy that was brought forward to you during the truth in taxation. At the finance and ops meeting, I requested that if there were any adjustments that you would let me know ahead. I haven't heard anything, but that doesn't mean that that still can't happen. Okay. One of the things, this is the official document that will be signed by the clerk, which is Annie, and will be sent in tomorrow so that our levy can take place and we can start receiving the money when the taxpayers pay their tax bills in May. One of the things that we always do on the document that you see on the screen is do a little test to make sure that the numbers are adding upright. And one of the things that we do is if you take a look at the second column, the $14,600,000 plus dollar amount, that is basically the non-voter approved levy with the exception of the tech levy. If you subtract the tech levy from that amount, the 4.7, you come up with the 9.9 million and that's the amount of levy that's been non-voter approved. They match up. The other thing that we do is we take a look at the first column, which has 22.5 million. You add the 15 million from the referendum, that comes to around 37 minus equity and so we're right on the number. Now, there were a couple of questions on the next sheet up, please, Joan, if you go up to the next one. Thank you. And one says the OPEB zero, zero for both years. Okay, the reason for that, just so you know, years ago, when OPEB became a possibility for the district, the district was allowed by the state to issue bonds. Those bonds were then set aside and they were paid for with a debt service out of that particular line. Those bonds have been paid off for a couple of years. So that's why there's zero, zero in there. The reason I handed out the sheet tonight was to make sure that you could see that the alternative teacher Q comp amount was in there and also the OPEB. And I think those were the topics that people brought up during the open, open session, public comment about a discussion and that I'd be open to it. The other thing that I want to mention is that these documents are not documents that we create. They're documents that are provided by the state of Minnesota. We're required to follow those. And so if it seems a little confusing or why don't you make it a little easier to understand, what we're doing is following the lead of our, of the state and we want to make sure that we follow that so that the levy will be approved, okay, by the state. So I would be happy to stand for any questions.
Okay, can we first get a motion to accept the, the tax levy? Director Sherman, is there a second? Director Hockert? Okay, questions?
I actually would like to make an amendment to the motion if I could.
Okay, Director Riley?
I'd like to make an amendment to the motion to adopt the final levy at $46,940,613.70 and that is minus the $794,406.81 for Q comp.
Okay, is there a second? Is there a second? Amendment dies for lack of a second. Any other comments or questions?
I'd just like to read the total amount, just so that it goes in the record. And the total levy was going to be, there's a motion and a second, and it will be set for, at $47,735,074.56. Thank you.
Okay. All those in favor of certifying the tax levy for 2022 at that- All those in favor of certifying the tax levy for 2022 at that amount, listed by Dr. Tine? All those in favor, please raise your hand and say aye.
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 Those opposed?
Nay.
Motion carries. All right. That concludes our business for tonight. This meeting's adjourned.